Order the Tuesday, September 20th, 25 regular meeting for the Granville County Board of Commissioners. I'd like to welcome everyone tonight. Thank you for being here. You know our meetings are normal on Monday night, but this is, we're having it on Tuesday because of the holiday yesterday. And we'll be back on track next month for the first Monday of the month meeting. And we'll also have a work session later this month, I think the 18th, is that correct? The night, a week from tomorrow, from today. See, the schedule's got everybody all whacked. All right, and we're, we're short one Commissioner tonight. Tim Karen is out of town, his mother-in-law passed away, and they're having a funeral. And he should be back next week, or actually probably back next couple of days. But he's unable to attend tonight. And with that, we'll call on Commissioner Mark Griffin for our invocation and pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear Lord and most heavenly gracious Father, Father, I thank you for the opportunity for us to gather together tonight to carry out the business of our county. Father, I'm so thankful for everyone here tonight, the Commissioners, the public, those that have come in to express their concerns. And Father, as we go through this meeting to discuss the things that are important to our county and to our citizens, I just pray that your divine hand will guide us and give us the knowledge, strength, and wisdom that we need to tackle those items in the way that you'd have us to do. Father, I wish you'd be with Brother Tim Karen's family as the passing of his mother-in-law. I just pray that you'll be able to fire a hedge around him, Father, and let him know how much you appreciate him and love him. And be safe, let him be safe till he can come back and be with us again. Father, now, as all the terrible things that are going on in the world, I just pray that your hand will be in them. And Father, just be, let people know that it's what you're doing and to make our world a better place. Father, I ask now that you go with us once again, strengthen us and guide us in all that we say and do. We ask these things in our name, Jesus. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Now, approval of the agenda. Does anyone have anything that needs to be added or taken away from the agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
County, County Manager, item five, has that been resolved?
Yes, I think maybe in the, the initial packet you saw it was an older agreement, the new agreement is attached now.
Can we pull that? There is a question about that I'd like to ask.
Yeah, let's, let's approve the agenda first, and then we'll go to the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion on the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda.
Do I hear a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion on a second to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any discussion on the motion? If not, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor, signature by, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Now we move on to the consent agenda, and Commissioner May, your questions.
I'd like to pull item five, ever question about it. The, the contract that was in, there was a 2024 contract that was in our agenda book. And I think the County Manager got a newer version, but I do have a question about one of the items on there that I'd like to ask him about.
Okay, does anyone else want to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Mr. Jim, I'd like to pull item nine. I'd like to have clarification on that.
Okay, we'll pull in items five and nine from the consent agenda for further discussion. And we'll do this at the, we'll do this at the end of our meeting, if that's agreeable with everyone. Okay, and now we have introductions, recognitions, and presentations.
We need a motion on that.
Oh, I'm sorry. We need a motion to approve the consent agenda minus items five and nine.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make that motion.
I second, Mr. Chairman. We have a motion on a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Ayes have it, motion carries. Thank you. And now we'll go to introductions, recognitions, and presentations. And our first one is a presentation by Granville Arts Council.
And it'll stay on, that's good. Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners, Mr. County Manager, Mr. County Attorney, Madam Clerk. We appreciate the time to present the Granville Arts Council and tell you a little bit about ourselves, what we're doing within the county to elevate the arts. We have several members of our board and our executive committee here tonight. Ms. Katya Hill, our board chair, is going to be speaking. Mr. Harrison Preddy, no stranger to most of you, who is also one of our board members. We also have Dr. Tom Koinis and Dr. Monica Potite, both board members here tonight. We have several other board members who couldn't make it this evening for a variety of reasons. But we do want to take a short amount of time, introduce the concept of the Arts Council, talk to you about some of the things that we have done since our formation in 2024, some of the things we're looking to do programming-wise and to elevate the arts in 2025. So I know it's normal that the presentations go one way, but we also welcome any questions afterward, and of course, any interaction or questions you may have privately for us. Karen has our contact information. You'll be able to, you know, catch up with us if you have some interest at a later point. Okay? First off, the last slide was, what is the Arts Council? And the Arts Council was formed in 2024 by a number of interested parties in Granville County who decided that there needed to be an organization to elevate the arts, not just an organization that, you know, gathers together, everybody gets together, maybe paints a little bit, has choir practice, that sort of thing, but looks to elevate the arts in a higher fashion in Granville County. We'll talk a little bit about what that looks like and the reason behind that elevation, and the reason why it's actually a good thing for the county. Next slide. The vision of the Arts Council is, as we say here, to cultivate a vibrant and inclusive arts community that represents the entirety of Granville County. That's both, no matter what you look like, no matter where you go to church, whether you live north of the river or south of the river, we want to make sure that everybody has access to the arts in Granville County. And we want to make sure that there's a variety of artistic experiences that people can have access to, whether that's the visual arts, performing arts, like more music, more dramatic arts. We'll talk about that in a little bit as part of our programming. And any number of artistic experiences. We want to make sure that we're also providing local artists and local artists or artists that are moving into Granville County the opportunity to thrive and be celebrated. And we want to make sure, and this is important, that the arts become an opportunity for social engagement. That means engagement for all citizens of Granville County. To basically also, this is important, bring economic vitality to the county through the arts. And we'll talk a little bit later, Harrison's going to chat about that. And as a way to celebrate Granville County, community pride, community meaning not only just, say, Stovall, Butler, Creedmoor, Oxford, but the county itself as a larger community. So we also feel that Granville County is uniquely positioned closer to, say, several larger cities in the triangle to become a hub and a dynamic hub for artists, artists that are being priced out of places like Raleigh, like Durham, like Chapel Hill and Hillsborough. We find that there are artists moving into Granville County, probably quietly, to basically find ways and places to create. We want to help bring those folks forward and celebrate their presence in Granville County. Who are we? I get asked this a lot. Who's on the Arts Council? The Arts Council is a, actually a growing board of about seven people right now. We are a well-cultivated board of Granville County citizens, folks who are both deeply rooted in the communities. You know, I've always heard that you're not really from Granville County unless you've got three generations buried in Granville County. We check that box. We also have several new to the county residents, folks who I like to call a tenant-under, someone who has moved here in the last 10 years, but has chosen to make Granville County their home and raise their family here, live out their life here. And the, the Arts Council is a group of folks, and you can see all of our bios on our website. We'll make sure you have that information before we leave tonight. Folks who are not just artists, right? We found that Arts Councils probably die very frequently when it's just artists involved. But what we've done is chosen to find folks who are arts patrons, people who enjoy engaging with the arts, giving their money to the arts, experiencing arts as a, perhaps a non-artist. But also, we do have some artists, but also arts professionals, arts educators, folks who are working in arts education. Katya's a prime example. She can give you her background, working with the drama department at Duke University. Folks involved with Van Scrabble Community College and their arts curriculum. So we have a broad swath of folks, basically representing the needs of the arts communities and arts patrons in Granville County. Our structure is a very typical governing board and executive committee structure. So the executive committee is, you know, a chair, vice chair, our treasurer, Jimmy Johnson's here, and myself as president of the Arts Council. We, the executive committee takes the vision of the board and acts on it. And I think where we've been successful is our board and our executive committee are folks who are doers. We're going to take the, the low investment, high impact thing and get it done. So. We're going to talk a little bit about the overarching role of the Arts Council, one of the two main things we do. Not only to elevate the arts from promotion standpoint, meaning basically making sure everybody knows that that play is coming up, that musical experience is coming up, art exhibition, but also we're going to make good use of public funds that are available to us. Harrison's going to talk a little bit about that and talk about how we're using public monies to elevate the arts in Granville County.
Thank you, Matt. I represent the non-artist and untalented part of the board. And anyways, my name's Harrison Preddy. Locally here, I'm an attorney on College Street. And we've had a really good initial presence. As, as the slide alludes to, there are state-level tax dollars that are allocated every year for different Arts Councils by the NC Arts Council for local chapters to use to facilitate different venues, different opportunities. And it kind of comes up as to a wide array of opportunities. Those tax dollars are going to be spent, we pay them as individuals. And for a long time, we weren't really bringing them back here. Matt alluded to kind of the area that we're at. We're far enough from Durham and Raleigh that we're not absorbed by them as far as an art community. We do have enough distance that we can bring folks up here, and most importantly, we can bring them up here to eat. And I'll get to that in a minute as to how these art events are not just supporting artists, but the local economy that surrounds it. As far as where we stand as an organization, we are in the first year of, of running. We are on a probation period with the NC Arts Council as a local chapter. What that means is, as far as funding goes, this county is eligible for $43,000 a year in art money. Now, every dollar of that, we are able to get by matching it with a dollar of our own fundraising. So it's not just we get to go collect it, we have to raise it. But this year, we are allocated $10,000 as a probationary chapter, which we've raised 18 of our own in one month at the very beginning, at the end of last year. There's been a, quite a, well, I'll put it this way, I didn't expect that. There's a lot of interest in this council and what the council has done. And my colleagues will talk a little bit more about the actual method and what we've actually put in as far as collaborations and events. But importantly, there is an appetite here to really maximize the amount that the state is giving out and to bring it back here. So y'all can relax, we're not asking y'all for any money. We're asking the state. Yeah, and so, but anyways, the state has allocated resources that we are able to get, and we are working diligently to bring those tax dollars back here into Granville for Granville County use. Let's see, if I can go to the next slide, please. So arts are fun to look at, they're fun to attend, they're fun to hear, they're fun to see. My favorite is the tasting part. But there is a, an economy behind it. Now, these figures that you see here, the 31 and the 47, those are figures provided by the National Endowment. And so they're not our county-specific. However, like I said, we're far enough away from Durham that people want to come see our productions, people want to come see the galleries, people want to see the events or attend them. But it's not so far, we're, we're far enough away that they want to come up here, spend gas money, eat, make a night of it. A lot of our tourism seems to be nature-driven. We have a lot of incredible parks. We have a lot of incredible natural resources. But when you go somewhere to a park, you're usually bringing your Cliff Bar with you, you're packing a lunch. You know, you probably stop at the gas station and get a Gatorade because you did more than you thought you were going to. Arts are a little different. You're going somewhere for an experience. You're going to go up there, eat dinner. Maybe 20 minutes before the show, you're going to go look at the boutiques. You're going to go and make an evening of it. And that's really what we've seen. Bringing in folks that are, that are coming in to spend money. A lot of the patrons of the arts usually are folks that are expecting to spend when they go out. Those numbers, the 31, $31.47 cents is the, is the average out-of-pocket expense that an average attendee spends that is in county. That's, you know, I'm living in Creedmoor, I'm going to go to Oxford and see something, or vice versa. 47.57 is out-of-county attendees. And again, that, that's a national average. We haven't conducted any true polling. Apart from, we had a, our latest production, we had Redbird Theater, it's a traveling theater company. They came here and put on a show, and 40% of the attendees were from out-of-county. And by out-of-county, I don't mean Henderson. I, I mean truly out of this area, Hillsborough, Orange County, Durham, Wake. And most of them, when we asked them, you know, what'd you do before, most of them said, we went and got dinner. We walked around, we went to the boutiques. Y'all know this well, with the Hot Sauce Festival, you bring folks in, they spend more than just the ticket and the food truck. They're here. We have these big events in the county that do a lot of economic generation. Our, our focus is doing that more frequently, at a lesser expense per dollar, with a greater return. But of course, we're hoping to get some more data to show you a bit more precisely as to what's coming in. But suffice it to say, the arts are not just something pretty to look at. They, they put money back in the community's pocket, and they also generate tax revenue for y'all. With that, I think the next slide is going to talk more about the community and some of the pride that has been generated in just a short time. But I'm going to turn that over to Katya Hill.
Thank you, Harrison. It's an honor to speak with you tonight. Thank you for giving us the time. My name is Katya Hill, and I service the chair of the Granville Arts Council. I am part of the tenant-under club. Ten is a generous number. I moved here with my husband from Durham in 2021. And I've found a lot of my artist friends in Durham saying, you know, I've heard so much about Oxford. They've got that bakery, right? Strongarm, it's Durham Farmer's Market famous. And I say, yeah, yeah, it's a really cool place. You should, you should come check it out sometime. In fact, the success of the last play that we presented by Redbird Theater Company, all founded by North Carolina artists, was a great opportunity for people to catch a regional premiere fresh off Broadway because all the other shows sold out in the other towns. So people chased the show to find it and us in Granville County. We have another show by the theater company this Saturday night. It's called Revolution. And it's about three women, a hair salon, and a gun. It's a comedy. I feel very lucky to be a North Carolina artist. I wouldn't be standing here talking in front of you if it weren't for the opportunities I was given by North Carolina when I was younger. I had a wonderful theater teacher in a small town, Silva, North Carolina. I don't know if you know it. It's about 45 minutes west of Asheville, and it reminds me a lot of what my experience is like here. Growing up in Silva, all of the money, all of the focus, all of the spotlight was on Asheville. The mall was in Asheville. You always had to go somewhere else to find things to do until a very small group of business owners, educators, librarians got together and really put their full weight behind the Main Street and pulling time and attention down there and putting money into the arts. I know for sure that there's no way that with my personality, I could have competed with an Asheville kid for important North Carolina arts opportunities. It was thanks to being embraced in the community and friendliness of a small town like Silva that I got to go to governor's school, I got to go to the School of the Arts. I'm really proud that we have in our state the first and only public arts conservatory of that caliber. I would really like to see more opportunities like that for children here in Granville County. In fact, my friend Harrison is a beneficiary of that. He went to the Granville Little Theater camps growing up, and now look where he is now. Here we are, and you're still doing great. And in fact, one of his directors from those camps is on our board, Betsy Henderson, who can't be here tonight because she's working on art. We've been asked by our community to deliver on stewardship to the community. When we had a survey out to people about what they wanted, we heard right away that they wanted us to put together some camps for kids, affordable camps in the summer. That's really important. I mean, the last time I looked for a theater camp for students of a comparable age, Playmakers in Chapel Hill was charging $1,700 for a few weeks of camp. There's no way my parents would have ever been able to do that for me at that age. And I, I don't know many parents who could afford to do it now. But, and we were a little nervous, I mean, I was really nervous. I don't know if we, if we felt we were ready to jump in and do a camp. But I learned a lot, that it's important to just go ahead and try something and not wait for what you think is perfect. Because if you make the offer to a community that knows that you're sincere about it, they will help you succeed. So instead of just doing one camp this summer, we did three. We did one week of a visual arts camp, one week of a music arts camp, and one week of a theater arts camp. We have plans to expand the program next summer as well. And we're very thrilled by the turnout that we received. We've done other public engagement too. You know, the funding through the North Carolina Arts Council to date has come through the Granville Education Foundation, which is wonderful. And they have been tireless servants of the public good. But because of their mission, their work within that arts money could only stay within the K through 12 audience. And that public money, it's, it's for all of us. It's for arts patrons of all ages. So to be able to expand the true value of that investment by fellow North Carolinians, this council has been formed to boost the signal. We've had all kinds of arts shows at City Hall. We've been so honored by our mayor's welcome of us. Many arts, arts, arts that you see on the walls there are by people who've never had a public display opportunity before. There's all kinds of barriers to trying to get your work out there these days. Next slide. We have been really thrilled to work with veterans through the Joel Fund. They have great stories to tell, and art is a great medium to tell it. Photography and other mediums have been an easy fit. Again, like Matt said, you know, low investment, high impact. And we also have orchestra. There are so many artists here. I feel it's important to convey to people, we're not here to put the arts on or give the arts or do the arts to anybody. We're here to support the arts that are already here and just magnify and focus their contribution to the community. Next slide. So that's pretty much it. We're really trying to invest our energy into making Granville County a place for all, a place that we want to live. I've never ever imagined myself at a podium like this, talking with you guys. But when I think about all of the artists who sacrificed their time and, you know, really stuck their neck out to create opportunities for, you know, younger kids like me, I realized, well, now that I'm in my 50s and not so young a kid, it's, it's my turn to give back. So thanks very much for your time and attention. I'm going to turn it back to my friend Matt.
So we've given you a very broad overview, obviously. We want to make sure, again, that you understand that we are partnering throughout the county. There was a slide earlier that did talk about how we are partnering with the Veteran Service Office to offer some workshops for veterans and veteran-adjacent folks that are within the county. Obviously, several of you are involved with the Veteran Committee, I know. That's, the two pillars of our programming this year and into next have been both children and veterans. And so A.J. Spees is fantastic to work with. I know several of you know him as your Veteran Service Officer. The Veteran Service Office has been great and a great partner to work with. Also, Granville County Public Schools has been a super partner. They've, when we talked about engaging with public spaces, the Mary Potter Center was home to the majority of our camps this year, both the Historic Shaw Museum, Gymnasium, rather, and the, the school itself. The center itself is places for both our music camp and our visual arts camp. Northern Granville was a great place to host our, our theater camp. The productions have been so far at the Oxford City Hall Auditorium. We would welcome any other locations that you or, or citizens of Granville County know of to offer more presentations. We do want to make sure that we reach the arts in, in the entire of the geography of Granville County. That's important to us. So we want to make sure that there's not a perception of a, an Oxford prejudice as far as locations. We are sensitive to that, and we're always looking for places to have more experiences. So with that, we could go on. I do want to make you aware of a couple of things. Katya already mentioned that we are offering another presentation from Redbird Theater this Saturday. That's at the Oxford City Hall, starts at 7:00. Fantastic new play by Brett Nivoe. October 2nd, at the Thornton Library, we're offering a watercolor and oil pastel class with the Joel Fund for veterans and veteran-adjacent folks. Fund for veterans and veteran-adjacent folks. And then also look for the first performance in a very long time, maybe ever, of the Vance Granville Community College Band. If you're not aware of the community band, it's a fantastic resource that we share with our friends in Vance County. They're going to be performing at Oxford City Hall as well for a holiday concert on December 6th. And we'll be doing more programming throughout, performance-wise, into the next year, into 2026, but also look for more kids programming things. If you would like to find us, you can go on the web, granvallartsnc.org. Granville Arts NC is also our social media handle. So please keep in touch with us. Our contact information is available, so please reach out if you have questions, ideas. We we wish to collaborate with with everyone that we can in the county. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, and we appreciate your presentation. Does anyone have any questions or comments they'd like to make?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to thank Mr. Pretty, Mr. Cox, and Ms. Hill and others for taking the initiative to do this.
For sure.
I think this is important for the whole county. I'm sorry Commissioner Karen is not here. His daughter Maddie is very involved in the arts. I think I'm correct in saying that and went to the School of Arts and help me out, Tony.
She's with the North Carolina School of Arts in Greensboro.
Right, in Greensboro, right. So I'm sorry he missed this presentation. One quick question. What are what are your fundraising events at this point? You noted, I noticed you had raised eighteen thousand or thereabouts. That is due to the theaters or the what? How's that being raised?
Great question. We've really been lucky that the entirety of our fundraising has been through private donations so far. So the the eighteen thousand dollars we raised in the month of December last year came entirely from both corporate and individual contributions. We are a 501(c)(3), so we, I'll put in a plug, all donations are tax deductible. But yeah, we we so far have functioned entirely off of private donation.
And going forward, if I've got my notes right, starting after your first year probation, there will be forty-three thousand dollars available from the state on a matching basis. So you raise it first.
That's right.
Then they match.
That's right. So we'll need to, to have full access to that, we will need to be able to match that. So so far, we've done pretty well being custodians of that that eighteen thousand dollars. We do have some of those matching funds that Harrison talked about, so it's helped support us so far this year.
And the probationary is is not just one year, it's a three year.
It's a three-year program. So they want to make sure that we're not only hitting certain milestones, but also that we're we're going to prove that we have the ability to be good custodians of public funds.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, certainly.
Mr. Harrison, I'm counting on you to kind of have a band like that for the holidays down in the Creedmoor as well. And hopefully you can work with the city manager and their board and Mr. Mayor Wheeler and maybe we can have some celebratory band from Vance Granville there as well.
They'll they'll play anywhere you let them.
Yeah, actually, that.
I'm counting on you.
So we have had.
And that's not a slash act, and they're extremely talented.
They are. We have two members at least in the audience today. And we have actually been in discussions with several towns around. I've talked to Mike and Bobby both earlier this year, just to introduce us as a concept. So I would say the the only barrier is finding space for for a performance. And so, you know, if you'd like to make that connection, we'd be glad to take that. So we will be meeting with several different town councils and things like this, the town of Butner next, let's see, and yes, next month in October, just to make the same type of introduction.
They got a beautiful new grandstand pavilion down there. I see what you're looking at.
There you go. What what loves a grandstand more than a band? Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to to say thanks, echo those words, Commissioner Willeford, and also just let you know how participation in the arts, I've seen firsthand, how it has translated into our children being more inspired even in other areas.
For sure.
So thanks to all your help and I'm looking at the year in review, you to be commended on that diversity of opportunities. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you all for your time.
Is anyone else? Yeah, thank you. We appreciate your presentation and thank you for coming out and spending time with us tonight.
Offering an update soon.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
All right. And next item on our agenda is Jason Falls, our Environmental Services Director. And Jason's going to do recognition of the NCDOT-sponsored Fall 2025 County Employee Litter Sweep, scheduled for Friday, September 19th.
Mr. Chairman, fellow commissioners, thank you for this time. The county has taken an active step at to help address litter issues in the county. Twice each year, county employees and commissioners are provided the opportunity to participate in the litter cleanup program in conjunction with the NCDOT Litter Sweep program. The NCDOT-sponsored Fall 2025 Litter Sweep begins September 13th and concludes September 27th. We are requesting volunteers within county government to help clean sex, clean a section of roads within the county during this time. The scheduled day of litter pickup will be Friday, September 19th, 2025, with a rain date scheduled for Friday, September 26th, 2025. We've had, I was sitting here in the audience thinking, it's probably, we've been doing this for probably the last twenty or some years. So it's it's been a really fun event for me and others, a lot of different departments kind of come together in a different type of setting, outdoor setting, rather, meetings and stuff. So we have, we have a really good time, so.
Looking forward to it. Has anyone got any questions or comments?
I do, Jason. Thank you, and thank you for the work you're doing on the countywide litter initiative. And.
Yeah, I was going to talk a little bit about that. I can provide you some, a draft handout after, after I leave here. I'll have to go back to my office and print up some some draft copies of agenda. It's not finished yet, but the county, the county's anticipating doing a litter campaign, well, litter program kickoff on October 4th, 2025, from 10:00 a.m. to 11:30 a.m. at the gazebo park in Butner. The town of Butner has done a lot of stuff with litter management, litter prevention in in different areas. And I think it was one of the reasons the committee designed to have that. The committee started off with Frank Sossman Group. Our kickoff meeting was probably six months ago, but we had representatives from all of public safety, all the agencies and within public safety, schools, I think the hospital was there. Huge meeting with all kinds of folks. And we've continued to meet since then. But I'll get, that will be held in Butner again, October 4th, 2025. And I'll try to get you a handout here before you leave tonight. Anything else?
Anyone else have questions, comments? If not, Jason, thank you for your presentation. We appreciate it and looking forward to this campaign kickoff. Our next item on our agenda tonight is our public comments. And we have, first up is Patrick Moore. If you will, state your name and address for the record. And you have three minutes. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. I will talk fast. My name is Patrick Moore. I am from Charleston, South Carolina at 792 Condon Drive, 29412. And I am here this evening on behalf of Energy Re, who is a renewable energy company with contracts with Duke Energy and Granville County landowners to construct a 400-acre solar farm at the intersection and around the intersection of Henry Huff and Webb Chapel Road. You all have an email from me from Thursday with an extraordinary amount of information, and I just wanted to highlight a few things because I know you get a lot of emails. There is a set of maps and that's a good place to start. And those five maps tell you everything you need to know. The first fifty questions you'll ask yourself, setbacks, buffers, who are the owners? All of those relevant things are on those maps. The second fifty questions you'll ask yourself are in the reports. And there's a decommissioning report, what happens at the end, and can we get stuck with these things? There is a real estate values report, what does this do to real estate values next to and around the proposed solar farm? And there's a health and safety report that answers all of the other questions that you will undoubtedly get from your constituents about water quality, air quality, soil quality, and all of the things. That is not proprietary information. Please pass those on to anybody that has questions. Please pass on my information. Please don't hesitate to reach out. Second thing, and I'll be very brief, a tool we now use on all the projects is a tool called a community benefits agreement. When we normally come into a community, there's what the ordinance requires, and there's what the community expects out of a project like this. And they don't always click. And so there's, the community benefits agreement is a way of meeting those community expectations. For example, the ordinance does not require that any number of jobs be created, but at a community meeting, you will hear everybody say, we wish this facility generated more jobs. We can't make a solar farm need more people, but we can fund job training, internship, other ongoing programs that are successful. If there's a gap in training or equipment for fire suppression, that's another type of community benefit agreement type of topic that is not necessarily covered by the ordinance. So with that, I am at or past my three minutes and I will sit down. But again, Patrick Moore with Energy Re, please stop by if you have any questions and feel free to pass on any of that information. Thank you all so much.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question.
We don't usually ask questions or public comments. And thank you for your comments.
Yes.
Our next up is James Daniel. And Mr. Daniel, if you will come forward and state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
My name is James Daniel. I live in Butner. I own and operate game surplus. We've been there for forty-two years in December. I'm afraid to even speak now because I'm hearing this person that just got up there. I'm trying to put down a solar farm, but I'm not going to call it a farm because a farm cultivates, grows vegetables, crops cows, horses, and chickens. A solar farm doesn't do that. So I call it a solar field. And here he is, right here, wanting to have another one in Granville County, just like one of them said on the board that night, if you let one come in, they're going to put one all over Granville County. We're going to turn into all solar farms to cut all the trees down or we're going to build solar, mega housing projects everywhere? We'll be just like Wake Forest and Kerry and Apex in the next five to 10 years. Granville County doesn't have the infrastructure now to control what it's got. It's going to have to have a whole lot more than what it's got if these things go on. Commissioner Jay, I'm in your district because I own land now on the side of White Road. I've already spoken to several of the commissioners, Mark, my commissioner in Butner, and Commissioner Goach. That night at the meeting, nobody that lived up there wanted to have anything to do with it. On the side of White Road, because I know a lot of the people, and I'm speaking for a lot of people that live on the side of White Road and a little side of White Road, on the Goshen Road, especially on the Shepherd Roaster Road, Sunset Road, the Ben Thorpe Road, the Avery Brooks Road, and all the way up to 96th. You couldn't even get in this room that night, it was so many people here. And the thing that I can't understand when the meeting was getting ready to end, and I've got a lot more, because I'm waiting for the next meeting when they request before you commissioners. Chairman of the Board of the Planning Board got up and said, is there any more rebuttal? Thorpe's lawyer from Riley came up here to the podium. And he said the Thorpe's have a right to put in it, this is word for word, I've got it written down and they got it down on the board. They have the right to put whatever they want on their land, not that if it inconveniences the whole community or Granville County or whatever. And that didn't sit good with the people at all that night because if that's the case, you would have everything from A to Z in this county on people's land. Well, it disturbed anybody. Me and Dwayne Eddy, I don't know if you know the Eddy family? Been up there all their life, Catherine Eddy, she's passed away now, but her son owns the land right beside mine.
Mr. Daniel, your three minutes have expired, if you will.
I I go over, but that's all I have to say on that right now.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming and speaking tonight. And that, our next item of business is a public hearing on the 5310 transportation grant in-town Oxford fix route. And Ms. Kathy May from our Senior Services Director is here to help us. And the purpose here is to hold a public hearing on the NCDOT 5310 transportation grant application for funding during the 26, 27 fiscal year. And Granville County has participated in the 5310 transportation grant program since 2010, and funding for the program provides the Oxford fix route and attached is a copy of the public hearing notice. And a notice appeared in the August 22nd, August 22nd edition of the Ledger News in both English and Spanish, and also attached is a schedule for the fix route, which makes seventeen stops each hour. And with that, I hope I didn't go overboard and.
No, that's fine. Good evening, Commissioners. This grant allows us to purchase service from carts to have a fixed bus route in the city limits of Oxford. The van makes an eighteen-mile loop each hour and makes the same seventeen stops within each hour. It begins each day at 8:00 a.m. at the Granville County Senior Center on Lanier Street, and from there it makes its way to nine senior housing developments, two grocery stores, two pharmacies, the intersection of the post office and the library, and our local hospital, which from that stop allows riders to access numerous doctors' offices, the Health Department, and Brantwood Nursing Facility. The idea behind the fixed bus route is for the individual to get on the van at a stop that's closest to them and then off at another stop that's within walking distance of where they need to go. Last fiscal year, this service provided nine thousand one hundred and twenty-nine one-way trips to our citizens. I'm happy to answer any questions anyone may have.
Does anyone have any questions? Now, this is just for the application of the grant, is that correct?
Correct.
All right. Hearing, hearing no questions. I'll go ahead and I'll declare this public hearing open. And are there anyone who'd like to come forth and speak to us, to speak on this subject? If not, does the board need any clarification? Okay, hearing nothing. We will declare this closed. Now, the public hearing closed. Is there any board discussion on this? Okay. Now, the Senior Services Director recommends after holding a public hearing, adopting the associated resolution. Do I hear a motion or adopting the resolution?
Don't move, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you. And our next item of business is Sheriff's Miders. And I think we have the fiscal year 26 Governor's Highway Safety GHSP Grant Resolution. Sheriff Fountain.
Good evening. I stand before you first, giving an honest to God, the author and finisher of who I am and who we should be. I just wanted to step before you and say, one, I'm sorry for the loss of Commissioner Karen, this family member, we will be praying for him and we will be sending him some correspondence for his loss. Second. Uh. Second, I want to let Chief Buster go ahead and do the presentation of the resolution for the grant, and then I'll follow up and close it out. Chief Buster.
Thank you, Sheriff Fountain. Good evening, everybody. This is year four of the Governor's Highway Safety Program Law Enforcement Liaison Grant. This grant, through Sheriff's Family Leadership, allows us to partner with the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program to be a beacon and share highway traffic safety efforts with nine counties in our region. This grant reimburses the county for any funds expended. We've been able to buy quite a bit of equipment such as radars, LADARs, speed signs, and this particular grant here will allow us to purchase five more radars, as well as keep collaborating with other counties. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the recommendation, Sheriff Robert Fountain recommends approval of the local government resolution from the North Carolina Governor's Highway Safety Program in the amount of thirty thousand dollars in grant funds. Sheriff Fountain further recommends that the Board of Commissioners authorize the county manager to execute the contract once finalized by the county attorney. Additionally, Sheriff Fountain requests the board chairperson to sign the order of resolution with, by the clerk of the board. Is there any discussion among the county commissioners? Here are none, we'll entertain a motion to approve.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the recommendation.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Here are none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just to follow up real quick, Commissioner May, I was gonna, probably much me and you might be on the same kind of conversation about the SROs and the contract, we have a total of eleven SRO positions, and I don't know if we are not putting them in the mix because Oxford Prep is one of our schools that is a county school, was funded by the county, and in verbiage it says we have ten. I've hired every school to have an SRO, Webb has two, and I'm hiring the SRO for Granville Prep, the Prep School now, we're in that process, so that'll give us a total of eleven to include Oxford Prep.
That's a separate contract because it's with the Prep School?
Right, so I didn't know if that would need to be kind of clarification, but I just want to make sure that the county knows we have a total of eleven to include Oxford Prep, so we're hiring the last one. With the new school, Granville Middle, we are using the SROs that we sent to SRO School to get their certifications done, to have two SROs at the middle school. There's almost nine hundred students at that new middle school, but it has only one SRO assigned there, so we are redeploying resources to make sure that's covered. I want to thank you for the vehicles that we have this year, that all of them have came in except two, and they're being deployed as we speak. With Commissioner May's commentary this week, me and I had a conversation, I just want to make sure that we understand that the chiefs of police and I are going to have an intelligence meeting soon in reference to some concerns from the community, as well as some observations by Commissioner May of reference to security threat groups in our community. So we're progressing through that. Rev, we baptized seventeen inmates on Friday night, I've got sixteen more that we're going to do in two weeks, and you're more than welcome to come. And again, we're just trying to do things different, and at the Congressman Knott's event, the individual from Bandag made a presentation of they need business and they need help, their employees, so we are now reaching out to Bandag to bring them in to do a partnership where our offenders will have a job when they leave. So we're in the initial conversations with them, so we spoke briefly, and we're supposed to be meeting this week to further hand these people off to a better situation than they came in. So we continue to do that, just want to bring it up to speed, and that's the only concern I had when I started reading some of that. I know Oxford Prep is a different school, but I wanted to make it clear, we're only one short out of the total of eleven. Thank you, guys, appreciate you.
That matters on the agenda as well, is a separate contract?
Pardon me?
There are two contracts, one with Granville County Public Schools, and then Oxford Prep has a separate contract on the agenda tonight.
Mr. Chairman, Sheriff Fountain, I just want to say, so often when people come out of incarceration, it's a difficult adjustment, and I'm happy for those efforts so that, you know, for those who come out and can get employed, that transition will be one that will be fruitful when they return back out, so thank you for your leadership on that.
Yes, so just for clarification, the contract with Oxford Prep has nothing to do with the county commissioners, that is a contract between the Sheriff's Department and them and the county attorney, you're just handling...
No, you approved that on the consent agenda tonight, that was on the consent agenda, and then there's a separate one that must have may pull that is for the ten that are through Granville County Public Schools.
Okay.
Correct. Yeah, I had no question about the number of overall SROs. There's another item on that contract that I wanted to discuss.
Okay. All right, just want to make sure we're straight here. And just one thing, Sheriff, you invited the rest of them, and you talk like the rest of them can't come.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Maybe we haven't been washed. We haven't been washed. Our next item is Economic Development Matters, and Ms. Charlotte Duncan, oh, you're already here.
Here I am.
All righty, well, take it away then.
Good evening, Commissioners. I am back before you tonight to continue along with our pursuing funding as a North Carolina select site for another grant application. If you'll recall, just a little bit of background, our Triangle North Granville site was selected last year to be one of fifteen North Carolina select sites, which means we are eligible for up to three million dollars of the ten million dollar allocation that the legislature put aside for site development for these select sites. Hopefully, they will allocate additional funding moving forward. So we have already received one grant application, we are kicking, or grant award for just over one hundred and eighty-three thousand for due diligence. So tonight, I am asking for approval to make an application to pursue additional funding for development, in particular to fund the pump station rehab, for the pump station that's on site. You have previously committed some funding based off of preliminary cost opinion for that project. We did get our engineers to give us an engineer cost opinion, and so it's looking like that will, it came in a little after the documentation was due for this, so we would like to make an application for one million sixty-nine thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars to complete that pump station rehab. And with this particular grant, no local matches required, this is a hundred percent grant funding for this project, and this will free up, in a sense, some of the money you've already committed to pursue other projects, which we'll hopefully be bringing before you soon.
Okay, so you want to have any questions?
I have one, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Duncan, when do we know, when will we know about the grants, when, what is the time of those?
I hope we'll know by mid-September, the EDP and C Board meets soon, mid-September. I don't have the exact date, they don't have that date published online, and I could not find it to say, I think it's September thirteenth. But we should know the day right after they meet.
Any other questions? And now, we're looking for a motion to approve the submittal of a grant application for the pump station rehabilitation in Triangle North.
I'll make a motion that we approve the grant application from the Economic Development Partnership.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, thank you, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Here are none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask her another question regarding another subject matter while she's present? Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Duncan?
Yes, sir.
Provided you some information regarding our airport, and I wanted to make sure that we were now following up and making sure who the actual users were, how often, so forth, type of aircraft, so forth, have you been able to get started on that?
In a sense, I did see your email. We have got some of that corporate usage that I think that one of the authority members had gotten you, and I have some initial information on daily flights usage that we've pulled previously, so we need to dig in a little more, I think, to get exactly what you're looking for, but it's underway.
And the county manager and Commissioner Willoughby is, we can get the necessary information for a additional conversation, I have a Congressman Knott, and see, and I know that you were also maybe working, reaching out to Nick Short with Aviation NC DOT, so I do think there's some possibilities that we can have to get that water lines in and get that done with some grant funding that may be available.
And I think there might be some conversations open with Senator Bud's office, maybe, that I've heard of recently, so we'll just make sure those are all aligned.
Yes.
Ms. Duncan, is the airport authority working with you as you need them to?
Yes. Yep, they've been great.
Thank you.
Our representative in particular is my go-to, and he's been good to work with.
Thanks for doing that.
Yep, absolutely, thank you.
It said what they wanted to say. All right, our next item of business is Emergency Communication Matters, and we have Stacey Hicks from Emergency Communications Director, and have at it.
Good evening, Commissioners. The purpose of this item is to approve the purchase of the Eventide NexLog Recorder for the communication center. Granville County Emergency Communications has used Carolina recording for numerous years. We use it for both our radio and our phone traffic. To maintain system reliability and ensure security and integrate with our CAD and our NOMA One phone system, we are seeking to refresh our existing recorder with the new Eventide 740DX, which is the latest system that they have available. The system provides redundancy, it has enhanced security capacity and supports quality assurance features that we use now, and will even have more of those once we upgrade. Carolina Recording has been giving us service for probably fifteen years now, it's been very reliable, and it's a certified dealer, it has monopoly in North Carolina, most centers are using this recorder. We are looking to refresh it in the amount of seventy-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, all of it will be paid for by the Emergency Telephone Systems Fund. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have about it.
Okay, does anyone have any questions? I have one. The network attached storage, is that in your place, or is that in a separate, remote location?
So we have, the physical recorder is located, we have one that's on our primary site, that's the one that we're going to be actually refreshing, we have one that's located at our backup site, we did that one a couple of years ago, so this is going to be for our primary site.
Okay, so the primary site is the 911 call center?
Yes, the primary site in the law enforcement center is the one that we're going to be doing, we also have our backup 911 center in Wilton, we did that one recently already.
All right, good, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, real quick, how long does a refresher typically last?
Five years, every five years we refresh, and since we just went and hosted with our new phone system upgrade, this will bring us up to be the latest, and it has several enhanced security features with it.
Ms. Hicks, where is this stored?
It's in our server room, it's located inside the law enforcement center.
Do you have full access to that room now?
We do now, yes, sir.
Okay, and do you have a hard key to that room?
We have been able to get a hard key, yes, sir.
And a card key as well?
Yes, sir.
Is there a camera in that room?
There is a camera.
Hold on one second, Mr. Chairman, I've got some questions to ask Ms. Hicks since she's here tonight regarding the power outage and some security matters regarding the server room. I just want to make sure that we vote on this matter first.
So, do you want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the request as recommended by Ms. Hicks.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion on the motion? Here are none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries.
I refer something to council, council, I'm going to be asking some questions regarding the server room, I need to know whether or not for operational security aspects, if this would be the appropriate setting or not.
Well, that was a question I was just asking the county manager, I don't have the information to judge that, but, you know, I would just ask that, you think about that carefully, and she think about that carefully, and how she answers you, if it is a need to go into closed session, I would ask that we do that.
Okay, I'll belay the question regarding that, my other concern is, do you have all the keys that you need in the event that we were having an emergency, a complete knockout of the power system? Do you have all the keys you need to be able to render that operation and keep that system going, should you run into the situation we ran into last time?
We have all the keys, the only thing that I am missing at this point in time is if we had to go to a redundancy of a portable generator, there is one lock that's on the breaker for the portable generator that I do not have a key for, but everything else we have been able to gain keys for.
And I don't have the information necessary to answer the question about operational security, I'll have to leave that to Ms. Hicks in terms of, you know, whether there's a security risk or any of that line of questioning.
My question is, is that in the event that we had a system failure similar to the last, would she have the capability to get to what she needs to get the system generator up and going to provide the necessary backup power, is that correct?
If we were, if we had, if we lost a generator and UPS, and I have everything to be able to access the generator and UPS, the only thing that I am lacking at this point in time would be the actual key to a breaker that has a lock on it for the portable generator.
So can we get that resolved, county manager, with whomever we need to get that resolved with, so that we don't end up in a situation like we were before?
That seems like an important breaker to have access to, I'll work on that.
I'll belay any additional questions to that until, and ask that we go and discuss that matter further in closed session.
Yes, whatever meets operational security needs, I'll, again, defer because I don't have the information to answer that question.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anything further? We thank you.
Thank you.
And our next is appointments and the Board of Adjustments, and the purpose is to make appointments, reappointments to the Granville County Board of Adjustment. The function and duty of the Board of Adjustments is to hear and decide appeals from and review any order requirement, decision, or determination made by an administrative official charged with enforcing the Granville County zoning orders. This board shall also hear and consider any and all requests for variances and conditional use permits from the public at large and arguments regarding zoning district boundaries interpretation. District Three seat is available with an expired term, expiring in April 27, District Three, do we have a appointment?
I do, Mr. Chairman. At this time, I have spoken with an individual, and he has agreed to accept that position, and his name is Mr. Kyle Glenn.
All right, and that is, you're making a motion to appoint Kyle Glenn?
Yes, sir, I am.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Oh, we have a second in several places, so, yes. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here are none, we'll go to the vote, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. And the District Six seat is vacant, and Commissioner Karen is not here tonight, and also the District Seven seat is vacant, and I do not have an appointment at this time, and the alternate seat is vacant with an expired term ending in... And the alternate seat is vacant with an expired term ending in April 26th. Do, does anyone have a nomination for the alternate seat? Here and, here and now, then.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Is this, this the board at our last meeting that we were, that alternative shared with us? Possibility that if they run into problems continually and, and we can't get enough people to have a quorum, that the commissioner from that district or this group as a whole could function? I can't remember now, just had a conversation with. But I know this has been on for some time and I can, and I, I'm aware it's not the easiest one to feel sometimes either. It was real difficult.
We spoke about alternatives and I, I would like to go into closed session, discuss a matter of personnel related to this.
Okay, thank you. And now our next item of business is to make appointments or reappointments to the South Granville Water and Sew Authority. And Commissioner Karen has asked to step down from the South Granville Water and Sew Board of Directors. And he has recommended replacing himself with Commissioner May. Do I hear a motion or is there any discussion needed?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Commissioner May to that vacancy.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. And Commissioner May, you're now, you get with Executive Director Scott Schroyer and we'll set up a time to have you sworn in as a new member on the South Granville Water and Sew Authority Board of Directors. Now, we want to get back to items pulled from the agenda and item number five. And let's see. Item five was the SRO contract and that it's understanding county manager. We have an, have an updated contract in there now. Is that correct?
So basically, the, the way it's being updated is through an amendment that replaces a couple of short sections, the effective date and the number of SROs covered by the agreement. Correct.
Okay, seventy. Okay, gotcha. Excuse me, this is, excuse me. My question for the county attorney and, and/or the county manager is under section 3.0 duty hours. And I know the commissioners want to stay clear of, of, of telling law enforcement when and what to do. But there was something in here when we were assigning SROs to a, to a school. I think our expectation is they're there before and after school based on the specified time here. But in section 3.2, it says they, during that, that time period, they shall be allowed one hour for lunch. And so my question is, is that hour for lunch, is that an hour lunch on-site? Or is that an hour lunch they are allowed to be off-site?
I don't know what the sheriff's operational requirements are for that typically. Under the Fair Labor Standards Act, a break for lunch, I said typically under the Fair Labor Standards Act, a break for lunch would be being able to go at your will. But I haven't researched that issue and don't know what the sheriff's operational requirements are.
Okay. Can I manage to follow up with the sheriff on that? And then Mr. Wren, under Fair Labor Standard Act, are you telling me then that, that would not prohibit them from remaining at school, would it?
Typically there, typically under the Fair Labor Standards Act, if you have a break from, for lunch, you're supposed to be relieved from your duties during that time. But you, I think could probably be required to stay on, on, on-site. I would need to research that and just confirm it. It's not an issue I've looked at.
Well, it may, it may not be an issue to research if the county manager was, didn't have an opportunity to talk to sheriff about that. But that was, that was my question to make sure that, you know, I think the, the intent of the board is to have SROs on property. Again, it, it's not our job to do the operational aspect. So that was, that was the issue that I wanted to make sure that I understood. So that's the only question I have about that. So we'd have to vote on this, this contract at this point now, since it was pulled from the agenda, county attorney?
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah. I make a motion, we approve this item. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll go to the vote. Everyone in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. And we're going to item nine, which is suspension of the mini-grant program. And Commissioner Jay, want to pull this?
Yeah, I pull this, I, I know at our work session, we said that 2026, that we weren't going to be giving no grants. Because we're going to be working at the, at the gap during, during a use that, that money would be there at the gap. And, and for recreation, you know, for us.
So we.
We didn't say indefinite. We just said, they, they, we're indefinite, that means completely in a.
It is an indefinite suspension, meaning we don't have a, a date to bring it back. Certainly, any majority of the board could reinstate this program at any time the board chose to do so. We did award grants for the FY 25, 26 year. So this wouldn't begin until next year, the 26, 27 fiscal year. And an indefinite suspension just simply means that, that we're just holding off on it at any point. Like I said, that the board wants to bring it back, they can. And what, what the idea was at the work session discussion was that we would reallocate funds, perhaps toward the gap, some facility improvements and in playground infrastructure improvements and/or some future recreation needs that the county has in other places. So we weren't designated just that funding to go to the gap, but that was one of the ideas and one of the thoughts behind suspending this program.
So indefinite, you guess, you're suspending this program indefinite, right? So it's not going, it's not going to come back up unless and, unless some commissioner will bring it back up to the flow, right?
It could be anyone could bring it back up. And one of the reasons why we started looking at suspending the program was the, as the later that the program has gone on, the less projects that we've gotten to fund that have really made an impact on the county. For example, we had two projects last year that were simply for park benches. And so I think at some point, if, if the need cools off, but then we, we begin seeing some reinvestment by these nonprofits and the eligible municipalities, we may see a need to bring it back. But I think with the, the success of the program and, and as the agenda report brings out, we, we have awarded over $550,000 to nonprofits and municipalities for recreation of, since the program was implemented in 2018. So I think taking a pause will give us time to regroup. It'll allow us to reallocate those funds and certainly the board could bring this back at any time.
Just so I kind of follow the, the procedure here. We don't necessarily have to bring this back up at a board meeting. We can bring it back up during the budget retreat when we're setting the goals for the year. And if we bring it up at the budget retreat, it will become part of the budget and we can vote on it as the budget. Instead of it being just gone and it has to come back before the board. Is that a correct interpretation?
Yeah, I think if the board gives us direction that they'd like to see the insurgents of the, of the program again, we could certainly work it into the budget for the following year. And then as part of the budget process, you could approve it.
Well, it was my understanding that we were going to pause it. It's, it's already funded for this year and pause it for the next fiscal year. And then make a determination after that point because we wanted to move the funding for that fiscal year I just stated for the gap that actually really needed some upgrades. But it doesn't mean we cannot bring it up after, after, in the 25, 26. It doesn't mean we can't bring it up in the 27, the, the 26, 27 budget discussion.
My interpretation, indefinite, that means.
I think that by using that word, we were just putting a label on it that there isn't a defined time period that we were suspending it for. So if the board decides to bring it back, that's still open-ended. But there's just not a defined period that we're going to suspend it for. One year, two years, or three years. It's depending on at what point we decide that we do want to bring it back, which could be at any time. This would be though for the 26, 27 fiscal year. So in next year's budget cycle, you're, you're voting now unless you decide you want to do it anyways. But this motion is to say in the FY 26, 27 budget year, we wouldn't have it in the budget. And the reason we bring it to you this far in advance is because the Recreation Committee generally would open their, their program guidelines and their application up beginning in December for the following year. And so this would say that the funding wouldn't be available, they wouldn't run the grant program this year. But you can certainly consider it in the next budget year.
How about temporarily?
Pause or temporarily, I, I go with that.
Certainly, the recommendation simply says to suspend the recreation mini-grant program indefinitely. We could just change the wording of the recommendation to pause the recreation mini-grant program. If that's, the majority of the board agrees with that wording.
Commotion then?
Well, I, I'll make a motion then that we, we, we approved it, the mini-grant, uh, uh, pause of the mini-grant for, for 26, 27, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then we approve item nine based on the change of wording from indefinite to paused. Okay. Is that, is it? Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? We have your second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Here and now, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for getting that clarification, Commissioner Jay. To, to change it from indefinite to paused and, and it, we feel, I feel like we can bring it back at any time now. Okay. Next item on the agenda is our county managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just have one item that I wanted to speak to briefly this evening. I wanted to let commissioners know and the public know that about three weeks ago, we had a very productive meeting with Joey Hopkins, the North Carolina Secretary of Transportation. We had invited him and our Division Five engineer up to Granville County to talk about a number of things, including our concern that Granville County, which has lumped into Division Five with counties with Orange County, Durham County, Wake County, Franklin County, I think, and has a hard time competing for limited pot of NCDOT funds. So I, I can't say that, that we discovered a magic bullet or a fix, but I think it was useful that he came up and heard our concerns and saw some of our analysis. And I do think that while, you know, we, we may not be able to change the overall amount of DOT funding, for example, we have the year of our Division Five folks and the Secretary of Transportation. I think that can only help us moving forward strategize about how we put transportation projects forward for funding and, and probably give us a better chance of, of getting them funded, so. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you. County Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have just a couple of matters for closed session that I, I think, the personnel matter I mentioned and then one matter for attorney-client privilege.
Okay, thank you. Now for commissioners, Commissioner May? Yes, I would. Mr. Cummings, can you place that, see if you can place that graphic on the board? There you go. Commissioners, I'd like you all to read that. And before I speak. And I'm, I, I. It says, never use drugs alone. Let that sink in, never use drugs alone. The post sends an irresponsible message as it appears to condone illicit drug use. Furthermore, this is compounded by, and by the way, let me go back. This Facebook post was by the Granville Vance Public Health. And its title, Never Do More, Never Do Drugs Alone. The post sends an irresponsible message, a message as it appears to condone illicit drug use. Furthermore, is compounded by, by tagging Granville Health, Granville Public Schools, the sheriff's office, county government, and the Boys and Girls Club. Also thought the picture depicted in the post was out of touch with normalcy. There are no beautiful sunrises in the life of an addict or their loved ones. If you're suffering from addiction, there are a number of hotlines you may call, which were not listed in this post. 1-800-849-6127 is a hotline, a via hotline. And a suicide and crisis lifeline that will also, is also available to the public by dialing 988. I hope, I'm hopeful our commissioners on the OEPW board can have a thorough discussion with our public health representation regarding harm reduction messaging. Addiction is a complex issue. Public service announcements should be carefully weighed and never leave the impression that the use of illicit drug use are acceptable. That's my other comment tonight. Thank you for allowing me to share that with you. As for my commission, I, I just, just to follow up on that. I'm not dismissing the fact that people, the messaging, I'm not ignorant to the messaging. The message is maybe someone can accompany somebody while they're using drugs and provide them Narcon. What I'm saying is that message went to all audiences. And that's not an appropriate message to go to all audiences. Furthermore is that, you know, anytime I believe that we, we, we move something to make it seem almost normal. Look at that sunset. That's not, that's not what you see. And someone who's dealt with countless number of addicts, seen what it does to families, the tragedy it does to that person. This was a, I, you know, I don't like to call anybody out for anything, but as a representative of the county, I think we need to have those heartfelt discussions and ensure that that messaging is appropriate for all audiences. I mean, matter of fact, how about putting a warning on something like that if you feel it's that important? But doing drugs alone, or never doing them alone, is not the right, right message. Mr. Chairman, I'll go on now and talk about what, what we, what we've done last month or so. It's been a very busy month for me. I thank Drew for having the Secretary of Transportation here. Commissioner Gooch was there with me as well, I believe, and it was a very good meeting. The reality of it is that we need to understand that we're going to have to do a lot of work because the cavalry's not coming in regards to our roadways. We're in District Five. District Five is comprised of Wake and Durham Counties. We're a small fish in a big sea and we're competing for that funding. And so it's something to think about and it's something that we need to look at when we do our planning and ordinances and things of that nature. How do we, how can we help mitigate? Because it's, it's, it's going to be tough coming by, by money and, and DOT is already behind the eight ball. We met with Congressman Knott, some of us did last week. Enjoyed meeting him, listened to his perspectives. And we're also discussing with him grant money, 5310 grant money for other parts of Granville County. I, I believe strongly that. I believe strongly that, and continue to believe that, we're going to get a route in Southern Granville. And I'm still hoping that Carts will help us get there, but we are pursuing with his office to see whether or not there's additional grant money for Granville County in that regards. We went to South Granville High School and toured their campus. There's been major improvements there. And brand-new parking lot. We know the weight room build-out is, if it's not started, is soon to start. And so that's great. And so a lot of big things at South Granville High School. We've already talked to Litter, about the litter rollout, October 4th. I hope you'll be there. It's a great thing for our county. Litter is a big problem in our county. And so it's a way we can address it in a whole-county perspective. Our next fire commission meeting is, I think, September 10th. Am I correct, Jason? And so I encourage all commissioners to come to that meeting. It'll be the first one of our new fiscal year with the volunteer fire departments. And I hope to have you guys there, excuse me. I met with Mr. Baker, Ms. Duncan, and county manager on ways we can improve the CAR-TAR RPO. That's our, our southern half of the county is in the Campo Capital Area Metropolitan Planning Organization when it comes to roadways. Our, excuse me. Our northern end is in the CAR-TAR Rural Planning Organization. We really not to revitalize that. And so we met and talked for a decent while and came up with some strategies, we believe, in an effort to get us more projects approved for Granville County. So we're working as we can for the citizens of Granville County to do as many things as we can to meet the growth, and we'll continue to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay. May, Commissioner Jay.
Yeah, you did. That's all right. I would just like to, you know, last year, Ron and Norval went and played in our senior games. Went, I forgot where he went to, but he came in first place. This year, he went and came in third place in one-on-one and came in first place on doubles. This young man been going representing us for the last two years out to different places and representing our senior games at the national. And if you've seen, tell him thank you for representing Granville County, and we appreciate it. With that, Mr. Chairman. That's it. That's it. And I had a good vacation last week.
Thank you, Commissioner Jay, and I'm glad you had a good vacation. Commissioner Williford.
Very brief. I also went on the South Granville tour with the other commissioners and school board members. And there's been great strides made at that school, and they are continuing to do so. The turnover and the principalship, I think, will be an added benefit for the children, the young people, and also the staff. So I'm glad to see the strides they've made. I appreciate what Commissioner May is doing on the Campo. We have several projects in our county that, three, I believe, that we have highlighted as three that we need. But again, we're the smaller of the counties, and a lot of the larger counties are able to fund part of those with county tax dollars. We aren't in that position at this point. That would help get some of those projects completed if we could put some of our money in there. Hopefully, the day will come, we'll be able to, or at least they will fund those projects. One is your district, my district, Commissioner's, May's district. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Commissioner Williford. Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. We have, I know a lot of parents are thankful we have started a new school year. I have not heard of any major incidents at the school. I want to thank my fellow commissioners for the additional SROs that we approved to send to the school. I do want to say, when you're out on the road traveling to and from, please watch out for buses, children on the side of the road. I worked for the United States Postal Service 35 years. One of the things that I was most proud of is I never had a carrier hit a child. The children are drawn to mail vehicles because they want to check the mail. But I always instructed all of my carriers, if a child came to the mailbox to ask him to stop, back up, let them put the mail in the box, and then pull on off. Children are not looking for you driving up and down the road. They don't care about cars. They see that bus coming, and they know they've got to hurry up and cross that road. So I ask you and all the families of Granville County, when you see a bus stop, please recognize that symbol and look for those children. Even if the red light isn't flashing, that bus has stopped, there's a child somewhere that's either exiting or entering that bus. The next thing I want to say in the recent tragedy that we've had in another school shooting, again, I'm so thankful for our SROs that are in school. I hope they remain vigilant. If you have a child in school, ask them that if they see or hear something, say something. And I'm going to step out on a limb. If you've got somebody that you know is having a problem, try to find them some help. Get them some help so that this doesn't happen to a school anywhere in our country, much less in Granville County. I attended a meeting with Brad Knott. He was a big inspiration, and I hope that through him, we can acquire some funds to help elevate our county through some projects that we have going on. The last thing I went to was a Duke Power held an exhibition here in the back, back here last week. There were a lot of firefighters, first responders, fire departments, fire chiefs. A lot of people from the county came out and watched the demonstration. If you've never been to one of those, I actually invite you to come and look and watch and see. It will almost leave you afraid to walk under a power line. Also, if you're ever in a wreck and you hit a power line, don't get out of your vehicle. That's the only thing saving your life. So please, 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 always don't ever cross a power line. Don't ever do anything digging-wise before you call the 811. You don't want to die, and you don't want to be responsible for repairing a power line or any other kind of energized line in the ground. So with that, I'll say my piece, and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffin. Commissioner Kozart.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman. Just a few things. First of all, just want to say how much I enjoyed, again, the Social Services Institute. And I'm just hoping that the new changes will not require additional staff as the process of applying may move from one year to every six months. That's something down the road. But if that happens, obviously, it may mean a need for more staffing at our Department of Social Services. Also, Commissioner Jay, I meant to catch you before. Just sometimes, can you help organize a conversation between the leadership at Carts and our DSS department? It comes up sometimes about their needs for transport. And I think Carts is well-positioned to help with that. The third thing I wanted to mention, and last thing, Mr. Chairman, for the past couple of years, we have had an item in our budget related to the Orange Street Community Center roof. And if I may, I'd like to make a motion. It has two parts to it. One, that we ask our county manager to come back with a contract to get that work done. And number two, that we engage in conversations with the Orange Street Community Board about that agreement that we have. So going forward, it may be, it may be a good time to consider another arrangement down the road. But that is, that is my motion.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Kozart. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
I do, Count. Mr. Chairman, yes. I've talked to Dr. Kozart about this. And at the end of the day is that, you know, I want it to be equitable with what we're doing. And so there are some things that we have not done in the southern and the county that I want to see happen. And I want to see them happen sooner than later. And on top of that is, is that, you know, I'm concerned that, you know, we continue to take care of a building. And if it serves a need, then we need to come up with an arrangement that best suits all taxpayers of Granville County and facilitates maybe a means to better position that nonprofit. So I am hopeful through discussion, based on a conversation with Dr. Kozart, that the county manager and additional board members may discuss that based upon his request for a contract and some other, per your statement that you made earlier, that some other arrangement be made.
Mr. Chairman, I went by Orange Street Community Center today. In the corner, we've been messing around for two years, and they'll fix that top on there. It's going to cost us more because I looked inside of one of the rooms this evening, and water had sinked down inside the wall again in that building. Because we've been messing around for two years, but we are already voted for, go ahead and do that roof. Regardless, whichever way, we responsible for go ahead and fix that roof because that roof need fixing. Are we going to sit and wait another two years? And then the roof going to fall in? And then we still going to have to fix it?
Well, no, we don't. Okay, that's, there needs to be some type of agreement made and discussion. We had that with Dr. Kozart beforehand. He came up with, but at the end of the day, it's a county building. And I'm hopeful that we can work out some agreement and arrangement that it can meet both in the middle. But that was the discussion we had earlier.
What you mean, meet in the middle?
I'll let Dr. Kozart explain it, but I'll be glad to go on more detail if you'd like. I've been waiting for four years to see something happening in Southern Granville. It's not happened. I understand you want the roof on there, and it meets a community need. But I've got a bunch of community needs that I haven't seen nothing happen yet. I think what I'm asking is fair, and something happened in Southern Granville. So I'm agreeing to go along with putting a roof on this. But there's got to be some kind of agreement because the county can't keep taking care of a building and turning it over to another nonprofit. For how many years are we going to do that? How many years are we going to keep turning a building over to a nonprofit at county expense when we don't do it anywhere else in the county? There needs to be a discussion.
But we have already, we have already.
Yes, on that matter.
We have already, on that matter, already made a motion and for to do it. And now you're saying, let's hold your hostage, hold hostage before we do it, before we, before we do it. My thing is, let's put the roof on the building before it fall in. And then, during the time, you still can go and have talk.
Just interested in a talk, I'm interested in an agreement. That's one. And number two is, is I want to see movement in Southern Granville.
If we moving in Southern Granville, what else we going to do?
Can you tell me? Have we moved in dirt yet?
Hey, listen, you talking to somebody else, but moving in dirt.
I'm just telling you, that's my position. I've made it very clear to this board for a very long time, and I'm sorry, I'm just not going to agree with you. And at some point, we have to make decisions on county property, what we're going to do with it, and how long we're going to continue to service property when we're only servicing one building. I mean, do we have community centers throughout the county? You know where I have to have meetings at? We have to find a volunteer fire station, have a community meeting. And by the way, that's for the community. We don't have a community center, a county, county community center in Southern Granville. Am I, have I missed something?
Mr. Chairman, if I may. And Commissioner May and I have discussed this over the years. And one of the things that I'm on record as doing, and it's realizing that we do need to be fair. And as we have looked at Southern Granville, we had some conversation last week about maybe the use of the Butler Stimp School. We're surely waiting to see what happens with the, with the Holly site. The board has approved some funds for demolition. And I think a couple of years ago, the $2 million for some type of recreation in Southern Granville. So I'm just waiting. Commissioner May, I appreciate, you know, your support tonight. I want you to know that I want to be just as supportive as we have opportunities to do things in Southern here. And I'm very happy with the usage reports that I hear on those who are using our DSS services there near the Food Lion, there in Butler. And so hopefully, that has made some things more convenient for some of the citizens in Southern Granville. But I'm with you, Commissioner May, on moving forward, looking forward to those things happening. And I know you were very happy about the work that South Granville, and I hate I missed that, the time to show that, but that's wonderful. So I'm all in for doing what we need to do across the county for all of our citizens.
Okay, we have a motion, and we have a second. And we've had discussion. Is there any further discussion? Then we'll go to the vote.
Mr. Chair.
Remind me of what the motion was.
Well, let that, but I do have a question and a kind of a comment. But why don't you rephrase the motion for everybody?
The motion was to ask our county manager to come back with a contract to actually do the work on the roof at the Orange Street Community Center. And the other thing I mentioned was that we engage in discussion with the Orange Street Community Center Board going forward about what that arrangement. There is an agreement, and I don't have a copy with me. But there may be, it may be advantageous for both groups following that, that we enter into a new agreement.
So the point I wanted to make is just that I'm not, I don't think there's a roofing contract waiting in the wings for me to bring back at the next meeting. But I will check with Development Services Director Scott Phillips, find out what the current status is, and bring that back as soon as that's feasible.
That's fine. I know there was a lot of conversation about it, so it may not be at that point where it's ready yet. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I believe it's about ready to go out and bid.
Okay.
Okay, so we've revisited the motion, and we have a motion and a second. And we've had discussion on the motion. And now we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion passes. Now, is there any other matter? Whoa, wait a minute, I forgot myself. Sorry about that. Yeah. I'll keep my comments brief. And we were talking about transportation, and we were talking about the district we're in. Our state association of county commissioners had their convention in Greenville this year, and I attended it. And after, after the convention was over, my wife has relatives there, so we visited them. And, you know, just riding around Greenville and seeing what it's like now compared to when I was very young, the roads they have there. It shows that they're in, they're in a district where they're one of the top priorities in the district they're in. And the progress has been made, and the roads has been built over the years. I was lost the entire time I was there. And there was a time 20 years ago, I could zip through there and knew. and knew exactly where I was at. So it, it, it shows where the, where the money goes, and the money is not, the deck stacked against us here in Granville County with Department of Transportation funds. So that's my bit on the soapbox. And with that, is there any other matters that come before the board tonight? Here and then, we'll entertain a motion to go into closed session after we take a ten-minute break.
I make a motion to go into closed session after we take a short break.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Here and then, we'll go to the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed, nay. As have it, motion carries. We will reconvene in closed session in about ten minutes. Thank you.